Ballin County Commission Meeting, regular meeting. I'm going to ask Mr. Jason to come up and do the invocation. I asked Commissioner Ball to do the pledge of allegiance. So come on, Mr. Jason, you can go ahead and do the invocation. Y'all please stand.
Thank you, let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for your love. Thank you for this time that we can come together to do the business of this city and of this community and county. We just pray for each person here that is going to speak, that they speak with love, that they represent you in every decision that is made today, and that you'll give us godly wisdom. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Ball. Thank you, Jason Hughes, South Side Baptist Church right here in Baymanet. So thank you. All right, our first thing is the adoption of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion now. We approve the minutes from January 28, 2025, a regular meeting.
I'll second it.
All right, you got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All right. Let's see. Commissioner Ball, we got payment of the bills.
Make a motion, we pay the bills.
I'll second it.
We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All right, now, BA two on the agenda is this notification of interim payments approved by the Clark Treasury as allowed under policy 8.1. No further action is needed. All right, then we go to consent.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We adopt our consent agenda with the addition of resolution 2025-075, as well as any other matters that we discussed during our work session. But I think everything has been completed. Attachments have been provided. So that is my motion to adopt the consent agenda with the addition of resolution 2025-075. And just to let the people know, since everybody's in here, we decided to do a little change in the way we shut down facilities here in the county. And when we're under emergency conditions, whether it's weather-related, hurricanes, snow, and that kind of stuff, we usually have a meeting, an emergency meeting, give one hour notice to the public that we're having this meeting, and collaboratively as a body, we decide on what we're going to do as far as closing up facilities. And so now we've got it to where we're going to go back to that and have that emergency meeting. In the event that we are not together, let's just say two of us are out of town, we can't have a meeting. So then the chairman can act alone and close down facilities if need be, if it's for the safety of not only you guys, but for our employees that work in our buildings as well. So that's what, when I say we are adding something that was not advertised, that's what we just did. So, and we all agreed on it, that this was a good step forward to clean up some matters. So just giving you a little history on that, because there's a lot of, looks like some students and stuff in here. So y'all can learn about county government today as well. So with that being said, that's my motion, Mr. Chairman.
And I'll second it.
All right, you got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All right, that was the consent.
Presentation.
Yeah, we go to presentations. DA one, recognition of volunteers and employees. Ms. Felicia. Before she gets started, while she's getting up there and getting her notes, I asked Felicia to come, to get all the volunteers, get everybody together, and to, y'all to be recognized. This is something special up here in the north part of Ballin County, and it was very needed, and I hope that the commission continues this. But it was very rewarding to see all of it. And before we get started, I want to say personally for me, thank you for volunteering and doing this. So thank you very much. Felicia, go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioner. Good morning, everyone. I'm excited to reflect on the success of the 2024 Christmas Drive-Thru Light Show at Bicentennial Park and recognize the individuals who made it all possible. While the holiday season has come and gone, and the lights are coming down, the impact of their efforts continues to resonate in our community. This year's drive-thru show was an incredible success, thanks to the hard work of so many dedicated volunteers, employees, and generous sponsors. We were able to provide a beautiful festive experience for our community. We saw a significant increase in the out-of-town visitors. There were 5,914 and local 9,267 guests. It was clear that this event brought much joy to our community. The success of this event would not have been possible without our commission. We want to thank you so much, commissioners, for your generous support. Your continued support allows us to bring meaningful experiences to our community, and this event was no exception. Thank you for your support and your leadership. We also want to thank our generous sponsors. Senator Chris Elliott, Representative Donna Givens, North Ballin Utilities, Baldwin EMC, the City of Baymanet, and Councilman Mike Phillips with the City of Baymanet. To our sponsors, your support not only helped us provide an unforgettable experience, but it also reinforced the strength of our community working together. So as I close and before I conclude, we would like to take a moment to formally recognize all of the volunteers and employees who made the 2024 Christmas Drive-Thru event at Bicentennial Park a great success. We will be calling up each of the volunteers by organization. When we call your organization, please come forward, all of you at once. We'll also call all of the names of the volunteers. You will make a line right here in front of the commissioners, okay? And you guys will take a photo at that time. Everybody on forward? Okay. Today, we are proud to recognize 14 organizations, 91 volunteers, and 18 BCC employees, and five Ballin County Sheriff's employees. Thank you all again for your incredible support. We're going to start with Baldwin EMC. Mr. Mark Ingram, Vice President of Corporate Services and Public Relations. We also have Michelle Jeans, Audrey Robinson. Would y'all come forward?
Come on, Mark. It's my time to call you up.
Melissa Hollingsworth, Abby Salvo, Chet Phillips, Ryan Johnson, Kevin Barnhill, Russell Johnson, Zach Dumas, Doug Brown, Y'all Mama Gru, Abby Salvo, Austin Ryan, Baldwin EMC. We thank you so much, Mark. They've done everything from setup to a contribution. Thank you guys so much.
Does it look good, Taylor? How do you want to...
You can come over here if you need to.
All right, one, two, three.
Thank you so much. Ballin County Sheriff's Office. Anthony Lowry, Sheriff. Chief Deputy White, I think, is present today with the group. We have Eric Smith, Luke Cowan, Ally Livingston, Jarrett Allen, and Zach Dinkins.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And what you have before you guys is a letter of thanks from, signed by all four of our county commissioners to the organization.
Y'all got to slide this way. We've done this so much, David. Come on.
Got to make y'all laugh a little bit, you know?
All right, one, two, three.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Ballin County High School, Beta Chi Sigma Step Team. We have Caitlin Lamar and Alicia Lewis. They are the sponsor and co-sponsor. Brooklyn Williams President, Meg Williams. Kennedy Grace Vice President. Cristiano Williams, Elasia Williams, Brenna Johnson, Gabrielle Gatri, Marley Crook, Rihanna Crook, Samaya Crook, Starla Chapman, Story Palmer, and Trinity Charlie. Thank you guys so much.
All right, one, two, three.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Ballin County High School Junior Student Council. Alex Holman, sponsor. Amy Boilin, sponsor. We have Sophia Probst, President. Hayden Coley, Breanna Powell, and Anai Archibald. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you very much.
Baymanet Rotary Club. Honorable Mayor Robert Wills. Honorable Scotty Lewis Esquire. Sarah Davis. James Harville. Abby Nice. Amber Dedhamore. And George Nelson. She's single today.
I'm glad you're single.
Thank you, Sarah.
That's right. You can come up here.
All right, one, two, three.
Thank you, Sarah.
City of Baymanet. Mayor Bob Wiel. Councilman Mike Phillips. Jeanne Phillips. Councilman Matt Franklin. Councilman Shannon Clemmons. Councilman Pete Sellers. Tammy Smith. Tina Covington. Blake Clark. Jody McMillan. Leanna Barnett. And Manetti.
Thank y'all so much for your help. Thank you. Thank you so much. There you go, perfect. I love good. Works for me.
Thank you. We have Coastal Alabama Community College. Their Student Ambassador Program, Aleah Bishop and Peyton Ball.
Well, Sarah.
Sarah's back.
I don't know where she's at.
Kiwanis Club, Baymanet. Brittany Clay, President. Nancy Dean. Martha Ryan. Leanna Barnett. Courtney Wilcox. Daphne Wilcox. And Tina Covington.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Kiwanis. North Ballin Chamber of Commerce. Christina Pittman, Executive Director. Kristy Styron, Administrator Coordinator. Melissa Gaines Phillips. Latisha Henderson. Nick Jackson. And Maggie Hager, but she's now transitioned to Colette.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Get off your tippy toes.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Okay, here comes Melissa.
Come on, now. Come on, come on, come on. Better late than never. We're going to get your picture. Now you're blocked up.
Right there, perfect. Perfect.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. North Ballin Utilities. Jason Padgett, Chief Executive Officer. Lisa Yoclee.
Jason didn't make it? Is he hunting?
Taylor Hager. This is, this was my lifesaver here, Taylor. She showed up anytime you called her. Lee Creasy. Suzie Creasy. James Godwin. Kelly Curtis. And Wesley Jackson.
Thank y'all very much. Thank you. Thank you.
Novellas. Amanda Self.
I need to just do my mouth. Freeze it.
Thank you, guys. Amanda's the Human Resources Lead, and this is her son Ben Self.
Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Now I'm hidden in.
Uh-oh, man.
South Alabama Antique Tractor and Engine Club. Darrell Suddeth, President. Kathy Suddeth. John Flowers. Craig Walters. Jim Barnett. Roger Sorem. Roger Sherman. And Keith Hammer. These are our tractor drivers, hay riders, coordinators.
Thank you, sir. Thank you so much. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys. Stockton Civic Club. Lorraine Harms, President. David Harms. Larry and Vicky Briers. Bubby and Jane Smith. Betty Sweet. And Jason Padgett. You guys were out there on one of the coldest nights, weren't you?
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for all your help. Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am.
It was cold, I know.
Thank you, sir.
Bless you. Thank you. United Bank, Loxley. Casey Henderson, Assistant Vice President. Heather Burns. Mike Burns. And Christopher English.
Anybody?
Is Casey here? Okay, we're going to move on. Okay, now it's time for Ballin County Commission Employees. Last but not least, our CIS Department, our smart, the smart crew. Brian Peacock, Director. Chris Welch and Tim Doer. This is the green team. They make the lights twitch and all that stuff.
Thank you.
Facilities Maintenance. Buford King, Director. Derek Crocker, Supervisor. Joe Devan and Alan Peak.
Come on, new director.
These are the guys with the power. They got the power.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. But that's all right. That's all right.
Y'all got to get over there.
Yeah. See it blurt?
Facility Services. Rhonda Riles Supervisor. And Mick Young Jackson. Mick kept everything going for us. Restaurants, clean stock, and just doing all kinds of things. Our Parks Department. Madison Steele, Director. Cliff Milton, Park Supervisor. Jesse Eitner. Brandy Wilson. Michael Anderson. Trevor Thicke. Joe Davis. Forrest Overstreet. Anthony Hicks. And TJ Spielman. These eight guys, wow. Now, these are eight. I say the fabulous eight.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's eight of you, right?
Thanks, ma'am.
There are a lot of lights out there. If you came through, a lot of lights. A lot of lights. Trevor, you still in trouble. A lot of lights, guys, and these eight guys with the help of EMC, they put those lights up there. And I just want to take a moment to say this group of employees, commissioners, they are the most hardworking, humble, and respectful individuals. They truly set an example of what it means to work together. It was an honor to work alongside them.
Thank y'all.
It really was.
Thank you. And last but not least, last but not least, archives in history. We have archives in history. Bradley Hamms, Donald Netzer. Peyton Ball, Brooklyn McWilliams. And Ronald Jones, he's not here today.
No, she's probably my secretary.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bradley. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Bradley.
Felicia, you want to be there?
Come on, Felicia.
No.
Yes, because, hey, you're the leader of it.
You had all the other directors, and here they go.
Thank you.
That's it, commissioners. I think there was one person that was going to speak on behalf of the volunteers to you guys, and that's it for me. Is it Sarah?
So there was... Okay, good.
Well, after that, it's hard to follow, but thank y'all so much for the continued support. It was an excellent show this year. As you can tell, we have such a great community, and I think that really was reinforced in efforts. But thank y'all for the support from the beginning, and we look forward to 2025 edition.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioners, y'all wanna make a comment?
Yeah, thank each and every one of y'all for the part that you took in, the lighting of the trees and everything. You know, it's the time of the season, you know, where we try to show compassion and everything else, you know, for our fellow men and women. You know, I appreciate each, the hard work that y'all put into making this thing successful that it was. Thank you very much.
This is amazing. I am so excited to see how many people stepped up to the challenge to help us meet the funding demands that we had, and so I really appreciate it. This is just, this warms my heart, and I know that it was so special for particularly the North Ballwin community, and thank you guys for meeting that challenge that we had, and we appreciate it so much.
Yes, echo what they say, biggest responsibility in doing something like this for the community is having enough staff to do it, and that was one of our biggest hurdles because staff takes up, you know, a majority of the work out there, and to offset the cost, you guys volunteered your time, which helped us have a really great event. And the more volunteers we have, if I'm not correct, Ms. Felicia, the more volunteers we have in these events, the bigger and better they're gonna get because we can offset the cost with volunteer base. So it is amazing. I mean, this was kind of a conceptual idea that we all had, and I knew that North Ballwin County would show up and show out, and y'all did that. And for every single person here that volunteered, and for the people that wasn't able to be here today, heartfelt, you know, we appreciate it. Thank you. Y'all all deserve it. And I'll finish it on the conversation. I just want to say thank you, and I forgot to say thank you to the employees earlier when I said it early, because when I was out there to watch y'all work and be out there in that cold weather and to volunteer, so thank you. It was a blessing to see people from Monroe County, other counties, coming over and saying thank you for doing this, and it was just a blessing. So Felicia, I can't say enough about you. I just, you're inspiration. I just thank you for what you did, leading it, getting it together, helping everybody. You were at the gate or at the little tent thing where we were, and you were just awesome. So I just want to say that, and thank y'all again. So thank you to you. And I want to reflect, I did have a really fun time. You know, I think it was towards the end, and I think Ms. Felicia was worried about if I was gonna ever show up in my community, but I think I came out there on one of the coldest nights too, because we had the heaters and the hand warmers and all that stuff. But once I started interacting with those people, that was, everybody was driving in, it got to be fun, and we were having a good time just in the line to wait to get in there. So it gets kind of hectic. They got that stuff down to a science on how the people drive through there. Sometimes you may almost get run over or not. Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate, and Felicia, it was fun. I had a great time volunteering out there, and I can't wait to see what we have in store for next year. Thank you for your leadership and kind of letting this stuff build around you and your visions. So thanks again. All right, so... So I guess the next thing is, and y'all more than welcome to leave if you'd like. It gets boring after this, so. Real boring.
It's over, almost.
Yeah. We'll give him about five minutes. I know, I'm freezing. We had a family that brought us a propane heater. Yep. We just were crowded around it for about 10 minutes and then go back out. I have never seen so much traffic, never stopped. They don't want to, commissioners, they don't want to stay.
Thank y'all. Thank y'all for coming.
Bye, ladies. Well, well, they got taken picture. Well, we can go ahead and get started. It's kind of quiet now. We got other staff recommendations, I think. Hang on one second.
We don't have anything else.
Just, I think Frank wants to say something. Basically, I have one presentation that didn't make the agenda. Oh, okay. I'm gonna turn it over to Frank, because we got it done at the last second. Last second, that's all right. Hey, we got time. See you, Mark. See you, Mark. Go ahead, Frank.
All right, commissioners, given this excellent recognition of our volunteers that we just had, we think it's only appropriate that we provide you with another pleasant surprise. We normally don't provide surprises to you on the floor, but I think you'll like this one. So we have been working, staff from across the county has been working on the fiscal year 24, 2024, end of the year presentation. We bring these to you each year at the end of the year just to sum up how the previous year went. So, and if you've noticed that we changed the format last year and did it in a video format, streamlined it. It was just a fresh approach to what we had done in the past. So we continue with that theme this year. And you'll notice, the theme of this video follows your strategic plan. There are a lot of projects, a lot of items that are not in here that was accomplished, but this is the core of your strategic plan. So it's gonna be a showcase of what was accomplished in 2024 and a little glimpse of what's coming and what's being done in 2025. And before we jump into it, I do want to give recognition to a couple of people on this. We've got, the county has got a lot of very talented employees.
Yes, sir.
But there are two for this video that really stood out. Chris Welch with CIS is amazing at his talents and the professional touch, and we're very blessed to, Brian, I've told Brian this a number of times, I can't say enough about Chris's ability to take data and turn it into something superb and professional. So thank you, Chris. Also, Shannon Spivey, she's worked behind the scenes so hard on organizing all the data to put it into a format that Chris can take and then turn it into a masterpiece. So without further ado, the 2024 end of year review.
All right. Thank you. Oh, yes, smile.
Forty-nine. Six miles. Eight.
Three.
Yeah. Ah.
Thank you. I can't wait to see them.
How quick can we get that in our hands? Yeah, that's awesome. When people call me and say we don't ever do nothing, I just like to forward that to them. That's right. I know. I kind of wish we'd have showed that earlier, but that's okay. It's all right, Frank. You did a great job. Since we've seen the preview of it, let's maybe make sure, if we're not too bogged down in fair hope next time, for the moment, let's show that when people are in the room. If nobody watches this. That'd be good. That's awesome. Yeah.
Never mind. Ignore me.
I don't... What happened? I don't... So any other staff recommendation? Excuse me, yeah, recommendations? Anybody else? You got anything? That's it? Okay. Public comments? Anybody here that want to speak? Press questions? Commissioner comments?
I'll start with the production. We just seen, wow.
Yeah.
You can see that Ballwin County has accomplished a lot, and we've still got more to do. You know, this is something that we try to do every year, you know, with the paving and all this other stuff that goes on, you know. Pretty soon, we'll be opening up the Canora Route 6 boat launch, which if y'all have not had a chance to go by and look at it, I know it's not complete yet, but I'm telling you, that's gonna be a fantastic boat launch. I mean, you couldn't ask for anything better than what that layout is. The architect did a fantastic job on that one, and it's great. And again, thank all the employees for what they've done, you know. A lot of this stuff would have not been able to get accomplished without them. So I want to thank each and every one of them for all the hard work that they do to promote this county and make it what it is today. So thank you very much. I thank each and every one of y'all for your support that we have with each other for projects that's going on.
I want to take this moment to thank our staff for always helping me and the rest of the commissioners. I know you do the same for all of us when we have to answer to constituents about things that they just don't understand. And you guys, particularly the ones that report directly to the commission, thank you. Thank you very much. And yesterday, I wanted to just mention that I'm... And yesterday, I want to just mention that I thank the public plus our employees for their patience during this timeframe when we are completing, I believe, I had it all written down yesterday when I was calling someone back about, you know, complaining about all the drainage projects that we're doing around the county. Thank you for your patience in these situations. We have 29 drainage projects that are being done, and as a direct result from some federal monies that we received to make our county more resilient to disasters, so that we aren't devastated, hopefully, when a disaster hits us. We know that we are more resilient because of the things that we went through in the past. I think the last time, if I'm not mistaken, if I speak out of turn, I apologize for that, and we'll get it corrected, but I believe 2014, prior to, three of us even being commissioners, I remember the 14 floods, and there was more than, there was twice as many projects that were being done at that point in time. But look how many more people we have in Ballin County since 2014. We have at least 75,000 more people probably in Ballin County, so there's more people that are out on the roads. I know that it's inconvenient sometimes when you have to take a detour, but please, if you'll just give us a little bit, few months of patience, for the majority of us, you'll have a lifetime, the rest of your life benefit. And when those disasters do happen, that we always say, it's not if, it's when, that hopefully, our roads won't get washed out, those kind of things won't happen. So we have a lot of projects going on at once. It's not that our department, like, just woke up one day and said, we're gonna start all these projects in one day, you know, and just make everybody mad. We have a certain timeframe that we have to get these projects done. And we're just asking for you guys to continue to give us patience for that lifetime of benefit. And also, I forget to say this a lot of times, but thank you to the guys that I work with up here. I appreciate your collaboration and work together so that we can get these things accomplished. That's all.
Yeah, just thank all the employees for what they do to make this such a great organization that we get to be a part of, and also thanks to the CIS Department, all that was involved. Like Frank said, he's already called them out, and that was a great presentation. It makes me feel proud to be a part of this, and what an awesome place we live in. So that's all I've got really to say, just thanks, is kind of like the message of the day, it seems like, so we appreciate everything.
Well, thank y'all. I just want to say thank you to everyone, we've already said it, but I just want to say thank you for, you know, Felicia, again, for this Christmas extravaganza, it was very nice. And thank y'all citizens for being here, and thank y'all for volunteering to be there with us. So thank y'all. I have a.
One more.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you for the video.
Yes.
I have shown the 2023 video in just about, either I was able to show it or give them, what do you call them, keep them things for you? What's that code thing? Where you put on there, and they can go to our website and pull it up.
Yeah.
Y'all know I'm not technical. Thank you, guys, who are technical. We all have different skill sets, but I'm so excited that we got the new version rolled out, so we all get asked to speak from time to time at different civic groups and organizations, and I'm excited, so thanks.
Anybody else?
I have a motion to adjourn.
Yes.
All right, we got a motion to adjourn. We adjourn.